Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting, the February 10th meeting of the Act and School Committee. We will start out with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes. Item 3, 3.2 cross off. It'll have to be another time.
Wait. What is 3.2? Because I have bullets.
Celebration of Learning.
Celebration.
We're having one instead of two.
Sorry, I had dots. I didn't have...
Did you print it out? Okay, and then because we're going to try to get to the budget more, we're going to strike item 6, all of it for now.
Item 6 will be tabled.
There we go. Oh, we moved Celebration of Learning first.
I have something else. We didn't have the Stipend Committee. I believe that would be 7.3 then.
Okay.
I don't know. Is that correct, the numbering? And yes, I would recommend moving up the Celebration of Learning.
That's next.
Oh, you have some comments.
I think we want to do comments from public first.
Any comments from the public tonight? If not, we will move right on to number 3, which is our Celebration of Learning with the elbow there.
Hi. We had, and I'm going to be doing this with some volunteers from Mrs. Triskill's class as well, and back in about the middle of December, first or second week of December, we had decided, in October actually, to sign up for the Hour of Code, which I wanted to show you a little video in case you're not familiar with what it was, but we did it schoolwide. Every class in the school did at least an hour of coding, trying to learn the technology and learn about it. So I'm going to play this little video and eventually shortly turn the spotlight over to the kids.
Hi, I'm Lea.
And I'm Tanya.
And we're looking forward to be studying computer science.
Hi, I'm Tanya.
We think it's terrible that 90% of schools don't teach it.
They definitely didn't offer it at school.
So we're trying to make this video to show that anybody can learn. We want to get 10 million students to do the Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
The Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
Hour of Code.
Yeah, Hour of Code!
How do you get them to get to the sunburnt? You need to do some actions.
I got it.
And then hold on it and see what happens.
Amazing.
Ahhh.
There we go.
I just saw the last product.
I know it.
This is the coding just for...
I thought like coding was like FBI hacker, single digit stuff.
A little problem solving, a little bit logic. It's like conceptual.
Programming is a lot easier today. Don't just play on your phone program.
Awesome.
I would say a good idea.
Maybe take an online class, buy a class to communicate in college. Yeah, one of the best paying jobs in the world.
These medicines are moving into the whole computer age. Technology touches every part of our lives. If you can create technology, you can change the world.
So we're excited that you have participated in today's Hour of Code.
We listen to lines of code.
Four lines.
Seven lines.
Nine lines.
Sixty lines of code.
Ninety-nine months.
Seventy-five lines of code.
Doesn't matter how much work.
Not a breeze.
Hour of Code.
Oh.
They're programming a code. The Hour of Code.
The Hour of Code.
Whether you're a young man or a young woman, whether you live in a city or a rural area, everybody in this country should learn how to program a computer.
I just completed the Hour of Code.
It's actually pretty easy to learn.
Girls should learn this too.
Understand that language, that's going to be the future. Anyone who wants to go into computer science, you will learn to.
Jack Dorsey, Mark Zuckerberg, Bill Gates, all of y'all, I'm learning. Give it a shot.
So what I thought was really interesting, we started each class about a week before the Hour of Code. I showed several different videos. That was just one of my favorites, that you could show the kids, kind of get them excited. Took them into a few of the programs that were loaded into Kids Corner that we have. There's several. And certain classes have just taken off. Kids do it in their spare time. They do it for just, you know, just to try to learn a little bit more about it. And second grade is one of the classes that has just fallen in love with the coding programs that we have. So I want to show you one little bit about their class that, it's just a short little video. I apologize, we were excited. The kids are energized when they come in the room. They're chatty. And it's fun to watch how excited they get. I didn't have my glasses on, sorry.
So do you press play and see if the program works? It doesn't work. Nice job. How do you save the picture? Do you remember how to save the picture?
(Inaudible)
And what? You can save the picture for to Pete, right? Okay. Oh, look at it. So you ask, you programmed it to draw some parts and a tree. That's awesome. What do you think about programming? Why do you like it so much?
(Inaudible)
And you can save your pictures. (Inaudible) And go on forever. So as many times as you tell it to go, right? Because you can tell it whether it goes around 200 times or 10 times.
I said it to go two steps.
(Laughter)
He's going to do it a while. Once I get mine, he doesn't want to get one. Right across the paper.
And so you can tell, they were excited. They thought that was just wonderful. So now, a highlight of tonight. We have, from our class, we have Chloe DeLonge and Dylan Lambert, who've come just to show you just a few minutes apiece of how they can make a choice of what they feel like coding and how they get started. You guys want to come on over? So when Mrs. Boberg introduced the Hour of Code to us, I kind of thought it would be a fun one-shot, one-off thing to do. They went that nutty about it. They loved it. They caught on to it 10 times faster than any grown-up, including myself, ever would. I just loved what I've seen with them, so we kept it going every week. So if you can see up there, she's going to build and then run what it tells her to do. So she has to problem solve, as you can tell. She has to figure out what she has to program in order to make Elsa escape.
That's what they do in life, though.
Elsa, sorry. I should know that. Have you watched Elsa Perla? No? Oh, you wanted to do the... So they have lots of choices, and as you can see, like, girls might like Frozen right now, and they grab on to that and start programming. And then there's the monsters.
They love this part, creating their own monster.
I liked that it timed them. They only have so much time to create their monster.
You have 29 seconds.
Because they could be there for two hours, creating a monster. It's so fun.
Uh-oh, we're running out of time.
You can bypass that. I know it was more fun to show it, but you can bypass the monster creation. So each level gets harder and harder and harder, and it's very challenging. Go for it.
No.
So it gets harder and harder. Now they have a choice of repeating or just planning step by step. I kept trying to work with them on using that repeat block, the on and off there. And what was beautiful about it was, as you can attest, they...
They don't give up.
They absolutely don't. The other piece that I think both Mrs. Boberg and I have noticed that we really love is, a byproduct of this, is they're collaborating with each other constantly. And we've set up the room that way, pretty much, so they can move from room to room, check in with each other. They become each other's teachers. Somebody who figures something out and conquers it, the student will go over and ask them for advice, they'll come back and use the advice. It's been awesome. You like it, Chloe?
I like it.
You want to do it for hours? They could spend hours and hours trying to... No, he's already at a level I haven't completed, so I'm a little lost.
Hard to help.
Yeah, hard to help. But I had to play every single game, and then some, and then to be able to help them. So it was kind of a collaborative, and they taught each other. It was just really wonderful to see how they took off with it.
And I'm going to say strongly, both boys and girls. And that's a great thing to see in technology.
Go back down another level. I love that they won't quit till they get it right. That's just... Thank you, Skye.
Now you know what to do, don't you? There you go. Go for it.
You're going to see this happen. Yeah, you problem solved and they get it out. It was terrific.
So thank you, Chloe and Dylan, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
I don't know if anybody, that first part, did you catch all? I mean, there's actually a lot of math there and a lot of thinking, because you're doing your Cartesian coordinate system, X and Y values, and your distances and all that. I mean, when they shift into algebra, that would be, it'd be like, oh, that's where I use it. Even though it looked like a game, it really wasn't a game. It was actually some pretty high... That first one, there was really some high thinking. And that first one, I think, was, that was scratch, right?
No, but it was similar.
Similar concept. MIT created that little object-based programming to make coding easier, because in the old days, it used to be... Did any of you take coding? You know, syntax errors, and your program would bust because you forgot a period somewhere or a quote. But this is, they'll persist and you get through it. Anyway, this is why STEM is the thing to go for.
Great. Thank you very much. Nice job. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda, and I will look for a motion, first of all, to accept the consent agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Is this where we can say things? Ask questions?
We're going to vote on it first, and then we can... Yeah, okay. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Five and a half. Okay, now we go on to, any questions that you have?
No, I have questions. Okay. No, just, I didn't know on the minutes to the January 13th meeting, we should have time entered the executive session, I think, in number 10. No, wait. I'll find it. Maybe it wasn't this one. To exit executive session, we had a time. Did we have it to enter? Right. Right before the number 10, it says motion by me to enter into executive session. I just thought there should be a time there.
Does number 8 say that? 7:50, motion to go to executive session.
I think you're on a different date. We've got two.
Oh, we got February 21st.
We're on January 13th.
January 13th, minutes.
Do you think it's number 10? It does say motion by Mary to exit.
That's exit. The sentence right before it. I just thought there should be a time.
You should have. I don't remember the time. You?
No.
It was sometime after the meeting.
If we exited at 8:10, we might have went in.
Do we have a time when we made a motion to adjourn?
We can check the video if you want to get it precise.
Is this the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, then I will have it in my notes.
Okay.
Oh, am I...
Or on the video.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, of any of the administrative staff?
I have one question. Just in, I think we're, Trish, the NAEP, so that we are having some kids NAEP?
We are lucky, yes.
Do your parents get notified?
Yes, letter went home already.
Nicknottled.
Quite a while ago, but no one. Bumped again.
For the audience, NAEP is a test that certain schools get elected to take. We just happen to fit a particular demographic in state, and so we have to...
Yeah, but we're the only ones in our district that got picked.
There you go.
That's how they sold it to me the first year. You're so lucky, you got picked in your district. Like, hmm. Yeah.
I might have a question also, Trish. The We Deliver, is Tracy still doing that?
Mm-hmm. We just opened today, actually.
Oh, very good.
How did the interviews go?
Excellent. The interviews went excellent. The kids were pleased the interviewers once again.
Do you have the names? Because that wouldn't have been ready last week for mine.
Oh, geez. Well, I know the postmaster is Camden Packwin. The face our counselors are Porter Bodkin and Marie Wood. And then the nixie clerks are Matthew Nickerson and Miles Town. The sworders are Kayla Pierce and Alicia Plour. And the letter carriers are Nora Bantower and Bella Fair. And they delivered 34 pieces of mail today.
Ooh.
How do we get stamps again?
You can get them through me.
Awesome. I'll be doing that.
And let's see, that was one thing I had down, too. And I want to know how the visit went with Holly.
Oh, very well. She toured the school, was very impressed, spoke with a few staff members, but also spoke with a first grader from Mrs. Demaris's room, and eighth grader. So she spoke with Hadley Legere and Chad Rosander. Not sure what they said, but hopefully when the article's out. No, but they're both, they're great articulate students who are comfortable talking with new people. So it went very well, and she made it here safely.
For those of you who want to know what we're talking about, we had a visit from Holly Couturier of the Maine Principals Association, and she's going to be featuring the apprise, the MPA's newsletter. She's going to be featuring some information about ACT and elementary school.
It'll be a news article on ACT. Yep, she took pictures and was really impressed with, I mean, just the whole, the things you see on the hallway that we might take for granted, the artwork and the trophy case of our Legos and OM, and, you know, she got the history a little bit of the school, but also the feeling. She was really impressed.
Anybody have any other questions for any of the...
I would say just superintendent, in your piece there, it said you did several or something, superintendent agreements, and what were those?
Just between district, a student wishing to be in another school.
Oh, superintendents.
For one. Just so you're aware, those happen more. I haven't been, I didn't put those in before, but I felt you should be aware that there's some kids that...
I thought that's what it was, but I wasn't sure.
Which direction? Some, mostly more high school. High school, want to go to a different high school. And because we are the official of record, the superintendent's saying we can't issue it. We have to issue it. One was to Old Orchard, one was to Massapeach.
I don't know if there's a question so much, the things keeps moving along with the evaluation work, which sounds awesome. I'm assuming it's going to be, I don't know if this is Trish or to Bob.
It's kind of three of us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will that be part of the strategic plan, or will there be sort of like a separate evaluation plan to get a sense of sort of like where things are headed, like next step?
It has to be a piece of it. But it'll be more of a, it's going to be whatever the committee, and it comes back to the board.
Gotcha.
It's not going to be something that we design on our own.
Do we know when?
The state says we have to have it in place and piloted before the end of this year.
We're about to start a mini-pilot.
Okay.
Yes, you could call it after vacation. It'll be three teachers, mini-pilot.
And what will that consist of? Doing the observations, the interator, that?
They, you can speak to it. Trish will do a pre-meeting with them, and then use eye observation to follow through in observing them, obviously teaching, and then the post-meeting. So focus will be on domain one, the 40 elements within domain one, the core parts of instruction. The teachers that she'll be observing have already been taking part in training for my body.
Okay, great.
Is this the one part we could head control over? Seems how some of the information from the state has been lacking.
That's a good adjective.
I have one more. Just one, and a kudos to Mike for taking the bull by the horns and going paper.
Yeah.
It was kind of a group decision. The question still remains, are we, are they going to approve our request for paper? So we're still preparing for the computer-based testing for Smarter Balance in the case that they don't allow paper tests.
If I understand correctly from your report, we haven't been able to pilot just because we haven't gotten specs yet from the state, but...
The pilot would have been last year, anyway.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Everybody is allowed to access the test, like the practice test. They're open to the public. The technology piece of it is very vague from the state. Building the rosters for the staff, and the actual browser that you have to use to take the test is very glitchy, and the support isn't there.
Which browser?
It's a proprietary secure browser designed by Smarter Balance Development. From my understanding, the DOE is working on a key turn solution. Is that the term?
Turn.
Turnkey solution. The question is, when will we see it? We should hear tomorrow, whether it's coming out soon. So we're making, we're taking all the steps just in case the paper...
Covering our bases.
...option is, you know, not approved.
The state offered the paper option. They chose it primarily for that, and also the stress that it would impose on the staff.
Technologically.
My opinion, but like he says, whether they're going to on it. I mean, they offered it, and they gave a deadline. We met the deadline, but Trish has been in communication with them.
On top of that, there are...
And there's no reply yet.
Three tests.
Not fully two-way communication just yet.
Just, you should know that, do you realize how much time this test is going to take? Seven and a half hours.
On top of the NWA test that we have to...
And on top of the kneecap.
And the other test that we were nominated for. We have three tests that we have to, you know, roll out to these kids.
This is where he chose the paper. A little bit more power.
Okay.
Thanks.
All set? All right, let's move on then. We've tabled number 6, so we'll move on to number 7, committee reports, long-term planning. Committee have a report?
Want to touch on it?
Yeah. We actually, we met this evening, and the purpose of the meeting tonight was to review, review what, review what we've done for capital improvement projects in the last seven years, and to build and establish a maintenance and security plan for future budgeting. And if you look at the handout that's coming around, the first two pages represent a draft copy of up and coming... copy of up and coming capital improvement and security improvements that we'll be looking at in the next several years. And then the last two pages of the handout represent the dollar amounts attached to those projects. What we did tonight at long-term was we looked at a number of these items and reprioritized them, and one of the main themes that came out of the meeting tonight was that security is a serious priority for long-term planning. And we also looked at further into the security, what are the, what are the priorities under the security plan? Then we looked at and reviewed what the priorities were in the maintenance, on the maintenance side of it. So there's really two separate items that we covered tonight. And again, we're looking at historically what has the annual average been spent in order to maintain the facility, and what we need to be planning on spending in future years, and avenues for maintaining the upkeep of the facility and increasing the security.
And I'd only add to that, this, our budgeting plan for next year is incorporating already these parts within, with some of our planning, and we'll get to that when we get into the sheets, the articles, whatever come up.
So if you, if you look at this, just keep in mind that this is all kind of very rough draft in nature, and, you know, it will be tweaked and reviewed and discussed more as we move ahead. And I forgot to include a snow melting device on this.
I can hugely load talk.
Melt half and maintain the other half for gale snow showing.
Just put a dome up.
Okay, anybody have any questions about the long-term report? And let's move on to the policy committee.
Don't think we met since last time, but we're meeting Thursday.
Thursday.
Long session. Anybody's welcome. Eight to 11.
Okay, and how about the stipend committee?
Right, we met two times, because that's really all we needed, and we decided to put in for a writing club, which is a new stipended position. And there really isn't much change, except that, you know, when you go to the next year, the base level of the salary increases, so therefore the stipends will increase just a little bit. And we'll probably be going through that when we get to the budget part of that. But not much change.
We added a spring Lego, too.
Oh, yeah, a spring Lego coach.
And we.
I didn't have my piece of paper, but yeah.
Baseball and the softball, the same as soccer. Because of same amount of hours.
Okay, anything else from any of the committees? All right, then let's go on to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we've got the contract for special ed services with Sanford High.
For the public that didn't know, we have a contract with Sanford for our high school age students and for all their education, 9-12, all students, special needs kids to non-special needs kids. But we haven't had a contract for them for the special needs since 2010. We've been doing it kind of three, and it's become aware and it needs to be addressed. So we've been going back and forth, and they've come up with a proposal. I've worked the numbers, Kim and I have checked over the numbers. We feel it's the right move. It seems like it's a big jump, but I gave you guys a handout right there, it looks like this. You asked for numbers last time there? This will show you basically the cost, but it will show you, I said that the cost is pretty well, almost level over 10 years. It may be a little high on the front end, but that's also because we didn't pay for three years. So for the public's case, it's $15,000 for the special needs, which is servicing currently about 11 kids. Next year it'll service 16, then 16, then 20, then 22, and 17, 19. It works out to next year, this year, which we will, she will sign it tonight, because you guys have already talked about it a little bit. It works out to $7.79 per kid, per day. This, next year, and then 5.36 the next year, and 5.63 the next year, and so forth. So.
This contract is set basically for 20 students.
Right. It has a max of 20 students, if it exceeds 20 students, then they would charge us an incremental rate. I don't see them doing that since they didn't even keep track of the contract, so. And we don't have 22 kids until 18, the year 18, 19, based on my numbers, and it's only for one year. So we have 18, 19, 17, so forth. Okay?
Okay.
Any questions on the numbers?
We discussed it last time, so I'm looking for a motion to authorize the signing of this contract for special education services from the city of Sanford.
I make a motion to authorize the contract signing for the city of Sanford for special ed students 9 to 12.
I'll second it.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five and O. And let's see, eight two is the retirement incentive?
Retirement incentive. I personally believe that the school district should offer a retirement incentive for sometimes, for some points, if it's in the district's financial best interest. And this particular, this particular years, which is only good for this particular year, is in the district's best interest, and it has the potential to have us be able to maybe change some other services that we have in the school. And you'll see that part in the budget should this go forward. If this doesn't go forward, then something in the budget will have to change.
And that's something that's still in the works, right?
It can't, there can't be any decision. People that may be interested in this have to see this, but it has to be approved by you before they can see this.
Okay, did we put that in our package?
Yes, I just handed it out.
Oh. But we talked about this at our last.
That's correct. Do you have anything to add to that, Kim? I just want to stress that this is a one-year. It doesn't go every year this way. And we're going to be putting forth a policy for this, for future years, so that you're not, you don't have people shooting from the hip on this stuff.
When you had time to read it over and look it, look it over, I'll look for a motion, a motion to accept this memorandum of agreement for retirement benefit options for this year.
I'll make a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement for retirement benefit options. As written.
I'll second that.
Do you want this year put in that motion?
It says it on the.
It says it on the.
It says it on the bottom.
No, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah. We ready to vote? All those in favor, so signify. Opposed? To vote? Unfinished business, contracts for special ed services, we did that, we did that, we did that. Okay, any new business?
Not that I'm.
No?
Just get to the budget.
Then let's.
I would say that the executive session thing, we.
After the budget.
After the budget.
Okay.
So the people don't have.
So what I'll look for now is a motion to adjourn our regular meeting, school committee meeting, so that we can go into the budget meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Let me get into that one.
February 6?
Yeah. Okay, now we will call to order our budget workshop meeting with the Warren Finance Committee members present.
I want everybody to do it.
Thank you for coming, and before we start, I'd like to ask Mr. Neal to introduce a new member of the, of the Warren Finance Committee.
Thank you. I apologize for not speaking up during the other, you know, comment.
This is a good time for it right now.
But I'm glad you brought that up. We have a new member of the Warren Finance Committee. Her name is Will Williams. William Williams. And he lives up on Sunset Boulevard, just up, down, halfway down the H road. He's a fairly new resident. He bought a place on Sunset Boulevard last summer, and moved in with his family. And he's originally from Louisiana.
Louisiana. Worst year. That's a stretch.
So I just want to make sure everybody knows who he is. He'll be formally appointed Thursday evening.
Okay.
Instead of waiting for another month, the next meeting, I invited him to this one here.
Thank you. Nice to have you with us.
Thank you very much.
And also, I wanted to mention, I did mention it to Dick Neal before the meeting started, but you'll notice if you see the postings for our budget meetings that are upcoming, that we have posted a snow date on each one of those, because last time we couldn't have our meeting the next night, which we could have, but because it wasn't posted. So we posted a snow date for the following night, the following day. I think our meetings all come on Tuesday. If we should get snowed out, then we will plan to meet on the Wednesday following, okay? So that we don't have to wait another week or two. Not that, not that we're expecting any more snow, but just, you know, to be regular, to be ready. Okay. I don't think we have had anybody new come in since then, so I don't think we need to repeat the pledge of allegiance like we would do if we didn't have a board meeting. Do we have any other comments from the public? If not, let's go on.
No, if you had, like, adjustment to agenda, we, last time we established the time that we'd start at 6:00 and we'd end at 8:00, and we'd have a motion to extend to 8:30 if we should, it was right in the throes of it. Last time we ended like 7:50, so it worked out. This time, because we did start at 6:00, we need to set an end time so that we know what we're shooting for. So entertain whatever you folks.
What time is it now?
Quarter of.
Quarter of 7? Anybody want to make a suggestion?
8:30?
7.
Let's say no later than 8:30.
Yes.
Depending on where we are, how's that?
Good.
Okay. I have cookies, by the way.
Oh, yes. Why, of course.
Yeah, my daughter made them, I take those right.
Oh, very cool. What are they?
I have no idea. Cookies, what are they? Pink and brown chocolate chip cookies, all different kinds of chocolate chips.
Really good baker.
I've had them before, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Why?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask Bob if he will review with us what our. Have some, have some. If he'll review with us what our protocol is.
Hi, everyone. There's a few people here that weren't here last time. We're just going to quickly review a little, primarily because the public people are here. Some of these, I guess you guys were all here last time, except for you two back there. So this is the third meeting. Quick review, initial budget is a rollover of the lines within the articles with adjustments based on the expected expenditures for the current year and next. And I'll give you a quick example. Something may come up, but I just mentioned it today. How many people have seen the change in their electrical rates recently? Anybody yet?
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's winter.
That came up, well, no, actually, the rates were changing, and depends on who you have for a provider, when those rates change. And so I asked him if he'd just take a quick look at that, and so she did some digging, and the good news is, we think we're within about $800 is what we think our bill will be next year. So that's pretty good. So that's an example of looking at the rollover and so forth. Quick walk through the process we'll take today, same as last time, but I'll get to in a second on the agenda, essentially this for time, I just took the same slide. Kevin asked us to make this part of every agenda. We'll review the norms each time. Chairman is to recognize people to speak. Chairman will decide table items if we start to get mired down. A quarter of minutes will be kind of a Kim-Bob thing. A quarter of official visit, this is Bob. Assume positive intentions, in other words, whatever suggestions. It's meant for the good of the school, it's not an axe grinding or any of that sort of thing. So the process we take is we're going to go through the articles, they'll determine the order we, which we'll go through. As we get going here, we'll touch base on, I think it's in our minutes, it says which articles we've actually done. And for the sake of the two-walk things, maybe we ought to just kind of skim the minutes out loud. Okay?
This is something.
There's been some changes in the packets. I think you two of the one, you wish to give anybody else some? These are.
I'll think about that.
Okay. And then what else, we're still looking at tonight, just don't worry. We've updated the binders to reflect the changes that people wish, this time they are sorted by article, and they also have the column for the, on the far right, a little bigger for you to write on. Also, it has the plus or minus number. I'm looking at this, so you guys will see.
Yeah.
There's a new one?
Yes, it's in your binder. Well.
I brought my old binder.
He needs a set.
So am I replacing?
Unless you have notes in it.
I do have notes.
Just, just. So this reflects those changes, Kevin, that we asked, you know, like the columns and so forth. We're going to continue today with two, three, five, and six, and seven, and we've covered the others. So just to, so the Warren Finance people know what we're doing here. I'm just going to take a minute, can I just steal this and go over and show Mr. Neal?
Sure.
Mr. William Williams, square.
Should have packed the same thing out definitely.
So this is the proposed.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, last time we wrote this column, this column, this column. So what we're going to see is plus or minus. You're going to have to flip that there somewhere. I would reference that if you're wondering where we're at. This date, I'm going to show this to you. This is a plus or minus. This is our means, last time, teacher asked question. How are we going to do it?
I was doing that. Since you have kids and. And we deliver mailboxes right outside this wall here. One sec. There for you. Right to your child, Ryan.
Thanks.
Miss Sun, you love this.
You love it. Thanks, Tracy, thank you.
That was very nice, thank you.
Do we have a whole bunch here? Want to put the calendar in here?
What is it?
So did you wear the table?
Whole bunch, yeah.
Okay. So I think that's where we're ready to go.
We're ready to go.
I just have one quick.
Let's go through the minutes though.
Yeah, let me, let me go through those minutes. Do you want me to figure out, should we talk about what Bill Hall had to say as well?
See what have you like.
The minutes from our February meeting, for those of you who were not here with us. Bill Hall was here, he's our school auditor.
Oh, yes, sir.
And he commented on the overall positive position that the school has come in financially over the past few years, and commended Kim on the movement to the financial edge software that helped move the audit process go a lot more quickly. He also spoke about our current undesignated fund balance.
Oh, thank you.
And the recommendation of the policy that's been put in place for our undesignated fund balance. Kevin asked regarding the specific values that need to be maintained, and he indicated that the uniqueness of the overall financial transactions between the town and the school accounts makes ours a little different from some other people. He also spoke about the, to us about the plan for creating committed funds, like the Hewitt Fund, and thought it was a good plan to lead to better budgeting. It only takes, he also mentioned that it only takes one or two things to blow the budget, and if we have these. And if we have these funds set aside, since we already have the funds, if we set them aside, we won't have to budget for what if we get, yes, what if we get more high school students, what if we have special needs students coming in?
In the middle of the budget.
In the middle of the budget season. And so these, these would be designated only for those uses. And he thought that was going to be a good idea. And that's pretty much about it, I think.
Yes, we went through Articles 9, 10, 11, and 12. If you people have a budget book, you'll see on the right-hand side, I just wanted to draw your attention to the columns that have been added, the money change, the percent, the column that says R, that means to revisit, and then the place to write a note. And you'll see that the questions that people had, whys or whatever, have already been answered. So that when we get all done, just going through the whole process, and I recommend an option to budget, we may or may not even have to revisit some of those. You may say, oh, have I got my answer? We'll go through the process again, real quick. We'll just start at the top and walk through, and you'll say, whoever said revisit, they might say, I don't even... It's good, and move on. Okay?
So we're not going to look at the ones that we wanted to revisit from last...
Not this time. We're going to get the entire thing.
All the way through.
Do what option I'm suggesting.
Okay.
With any luck, we should get through.
So we're going to start tonight then on Article 2, correct?
Two quick questions or recommendations, and these don't take any time. The, as we go through this, though, part of what I'm thinking in my brain is continuing to build the binder. So for example, the timeline that we have, putting in the binder, the reason I'm thinking of doing that, and talking about it, is for next year, if we have one that's totally complete, that becomes the model for the beginning of next year. So I'm recommending that we make sure we do have a timeline in there. The glossary that we had with the designated, undesignated terms, I think that should go in there too, because questions come up about it. Also, kind of what you had up there on the PowerPoint, Bob, maybe if we can get a sheet of particularly the norms and the procedures, again, that goes in the beginning of it, so that we have sort of a stable budget binder with all of these documents for moving forward.
And I think the pie shape, the pie too, this would be good to have in there to show because...
Yeah, fine.
What percentage goes for different things? Even though it might vary a little bit from year to year, it's pretty much those pieces of pie, colors aren't going to change.
Just clarity, when you said the glossary, what did you refer to?
We received in online, the guy just got a hard copy, the designated reserve accounts?
Yes.
And the sort of like the definitions of things?
Yeah, that's true.
Those, because we, early, we had a document too that sort of defined what's the difference between designated, undesignated, reserve, all the different kinds of accounts.
He gave us those things when he was here last week.
Were you here? Would go, no?
Yeah.
That's where they came from, from him, I guess.
So those documents, I think, also are good in here. Because again, they're good reference points, because those questions will continually come up.
And any...
Yeah, thanks.
And also, just to slide back to the regular buckboard meeting, at the bottom, we've already made the adjustment next time, you'll see, at the bottom of every agenda will be a list of all future meetings, like try to go out like two months, or at least the next 30 days. So you'll always just look at your agenda, it isn't on this one, but this kind of came up as after the fact. Mary kind of had that come about. I was like, well, we just add it to the bottom every time. So it's, every time you get, you'll see the next 30 days or 35 days.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right, so we're going to start then tonight looking at Article 2, which is regular and secondary instruction.
And this would be on page...
3?
Page 2, bottom part of page 2. And we're on the teacher salary. This is the big one, obviously. We're going to be on page 2 on the... Hopefully, you should be able to just pretty much review just this sheet. You won't have to flip back and forth. I mean, do what you need, but hopefully it'll help. You'll see there, it's an increase of 4,100, basically, 1%. One thing people need to know is, teachers are kind of in a couple of different places. Special ed teachers are in one place, these teachers, core teachers are in another place, ed techs are in a different place, so it's not the entire staff in one location.
This one's 3 to 8, all the teachers from 3 to 8.
There you go, 3 to 8.
Teachers 3 to 8, not including special ed teachers.
No, just 3 to 8.
Just 3 to 8.
This plus art, music.
Plus art, music, and PE, yep.
Do you wish to revisit it? Anyone?
Not the salary.
Ed tech salaries would be the same thing, right?
Yep.
Excuse me, David?
So can we assume from this that looking at FY '14, '15, and looking at what '15 is budgeted at, that that's representing loss of a teacher?
No.
No.
Because that doesn't cover increases in, increased raises and so forth that would be covered in a contract, would it? I'm just looking at the numbers, and you're looking, and it's barely above this year, but with the number of 3, am I wrong? With the number of 3, 8 teachers, your raises alone would be significantly...
Well, the phys ed teacher was someone else, and so now we're budgeting his, which is at a lower rate.
Right. Okay, I'm just trying.
Music is new too, so.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Good question.
That's what we have everybody here for.
Okay, you'll get more questions. Always, these guys know that.
I hope you're looking forward to that STEM school this summer. So the ed tech lines, ed tech salaries. This is the two ed techs, actually, Gail, who was here earlier, and Jennifer, right?
No, I'm a separate.
Who was it?
Regular classroom.
We shouldn't use names anyway, the two ed techs.
Yeah, right.
Sorry.
These are the two regular ed techs for regular education, correct?
Correct, for 3 to 8.
Revisit or not, anyone? The next one...
Why 9%? I'm just curious. Just, that's the way it works out.
15 minutes. 15 minutes is budgeted in here.
An additional 15 minutes?
It's budgeted currently into it, that may not stay in there.
Bless you.
There's some discussion, there's some ambiguity on that topic.
Excuse me.
So this...
The extra 15 minutes is the 9%?
Yes.
What's that? I'm not familiar with that.
Okay, in the last two years, ed techs were paid 15 minutes to prep before teaching. And that 15 minutes was covered through a grant. As our grants shrink, we moved that 15 minutes over into the operating budget, because technically, I mean, to put 15 minutes in a grant means I also had to keep track of everybody's payroll, 15 minutes for every day. So it moved over into operating. And so this is a true reflection of what ed techs are really being paid. And we have a couple that are, also have a little more time to prep besides 15 minutes. We have two that are.
Awesome.
Okay.
I'd like to revisit this one.
Okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Next, and is that just for more of a why? Do we need to find any information for you?
No, no, it's a bigger question about this.
Substitutes. I would like Kim to address why that's the way it is.
With the substitutes, basically, as the way the contracts are written, we have to cover for every teacher or every ed tech being out, the max of what the contract would allow. So if a teacher is out for 20 days, you know, they get up to 20 days, whether it's sick time or personal time, and ed techs get 15, both personal and... But if, and we've had, we've had a few this year that, you know, they're maxed out and our long-term subs, everything, and if we don't budget, you know, I mean, it takes the flu going through this whole place, and we could be out for 20 days. My concern is if I don't cover for the average, and with the what-if case, and I, it also will mess up the budget, and I end up taking it from someplace else.
Yeah.
Because it is a contracted item, I just, and because I've, you know, we did a study of the amount of days that people have been taking, you know, year to year to year, and we really weren't covering what we needed, so I just went with it, well, this is what it is. This is what it could cost if every person took all their days.
Everybody took all their days.
Okay.
So does anyone need to revisit that?
No.
Looks like a no. Next one, teacher benefits. That's similar to what we did on everybody else's, that we talked about the other day.
What's the substantial increase? I don't know if you just want to revisit it now or get the answer now?
You can get the answer now, it'll take half a second.
I mean, when you see 54%.
Okay. This, okay, teachers, the teachers receive, the SUDA doubled this year.
What is SUDA?
SUDA is state unemployment tax.
State unemployment, okay.
I'm sorry, state of what?
State unemployment tax.
Unemployment tax.
Okay. So basically, going from $212 per employee is now up to $418.80 per employee. So there's a big part of it there. Our workman's comp has gone up to 55 cents for every $100 that we pay our employees. And I also covered for, the teachers get one day, one half of 1% of the base as a retirement, and I think that kind of got missed last year too, so I made sure that that one's in there.
Are you okay?
Yep.
Do you need it on the R list?
No.
Ed tech benefits, which is basically the same answer you just had, but it just happened we blew it down. Professional group insurance, we talked about this, and remember, it's basically the 3% is a placeholder, just for the warrant finance. We do not know what our health insurance costs are going to be. We have to make a guess. We are anticipating a 3% increase in the raise in the insurance. That's a best guess. We won't have a hard number probably till the middle of April. We do anticipate the following year, though, to go up substantially, because we've had some claims. Because it's now based on experience rating, and we have a small school, and you only need to have a couple Uzis and you get up.
And I just, just to note, because it looks like there's a big drop here with this one, but it's really because we've had employees left who had family coverage, and now they've dropped down to single coverage, and we've had some that have gone from full family down to, you know, spouse and other, so there were some changes in that.
Are we okay with that, folks?
This one has a question, but 3% increase in benefits?
Health and benefits, health insurance.
Premiums.
That's premiums.
Okay, not benefits.
Well, I call it health benefit, that's what.
Premiums, yeah, it's a benefit.
Ed tech group, group insurance?
Same thing happened there, I would assume, not personnel changes.
Substitute benefits? Just a placeholder. I'm just going to keep going unless somebody says whoa, okay? Meepers?
That's a main jump all the way across for all...
And that's, that's the main state in retirement system?
Right. So the employer portion that we have to pay went from .0265 to times their gross pay, up to .0336.
Next item, meepers, ed techs. Next item, repairs. Piano tuning, I guess. Must have got a deal.
What else does this include?
Well, basically, that's really all that's in it.
What do you mean?
And that's, I noticed, I looked at that today too. Last year, there was $600 budgeted for that, I believe. And he had the piano tuned once during the year, which is an $80 cost, and even if he had it tuned twice during the year, it would still be only $160, which, you know, he might need to have it done twice, depending on what the... So that makes sense that it would go down.
Plus, the only piece of teacher equipment that needs repairs immediately, the piano?
This particular line.
A lot of...
Specials are in this.
For this line, yeah.
And a lot of things are covered under Michael's budget, if it's technology, if it's big equipment, and it's under Andy's budget.
Seems random.
It does. That's what I thought I was looking at, that one, right?
But you got music garden gym in Article 2.
Okay, so it's not an R. Okay, equipment lease, copier expense based on percentage of the, by the grades, 3, 8, there'll be another place, another line in another area too. Anybody want to revisit that, including people sitting over there?
Yeah, I'd like to revisit that.
What, supplies?
That, I'm going to say that might get added back in to that number because of possibly an option that we have, I'm going to put this down as an R. Depending on, if you go with a certain option, that I'm going to suppose, you may have to add something back in right there, probably that same amount.
I think if you're thinking so, it would be catered to.
It's another set, they needed another set. I already, that's correct, right?
Could I make a correction? That's the benchmark assessment. Testing, yeah, but that's just one testing, I mean, if we have any other testing... No, I'm saying the name of it is the benchmark. No, that's our benchmark. Oh, sorry. Right, and this is the 3 to 8, you may need more in the primary group.
Oh, the other one, that's right.
They're there.
Okay. Books and periodicals?
Could I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Is this a new math curriculum that's going to be used for 6th grade? Is that why the increase in supplies?
It's the program that has now been initiated in K-5, so it would be the 6th grade.
So just moving what they're doing in K-5 into grade 6, okay.
I believe that's a Singapore according, right?
Does this include, I'm assuming it has its own budget, the library and books for these shelves?
That's on...
No.
That's in Article 6.
Sometimes when you buy sets of things, if you've got a big order, like a $100,000 order, they'll throw in all the teacher stuff for nothing, but you're not going to do that with the small order.
Nope.
So we're okay with that, folks? I can't answer that at all. Why such a...
Minus 20% says on this.
Do you have a...
Equipment expenses now with K-2.
This is 3, 8.
What equipment does this cover?
This would be individual classroom things, like bookcases or overhead projectors, any of those kinds of in classrooms.
This is gym equipment too, gym equipment, art, basketball. I can get you a detail of what all the equipment is.
But that is not...
Teachers have, each teacher brought in their budget, and some of them had equipment.
For their, something for their rooms and something for their classes.
We'll get a list. Computer software, NUIA, that's kind of a...
I have a question on that one though.
Go for it.
This is, you have this in the 3, 8 line. The reason why it's gone up is because we've included it in K-2 as well.
Okay.
It's not showing up, you know, I'm guessing you're not going to see this again in K-2, correct?
Um, no.
Because we now test K through 8.
Okay, yeah, no, it's not. Okay, yeah, no, it's not.
So this is for everybody?
So this is K?
Yeah, it's a K-eight, NWA assessment.
Is the NUA required? Because while it's out of testing, we're dealing with the kids, do we have to do the NUA, too?
Originally, when we started NWA, I was under the assumption that it was a requirement from the state that we had an outside standardized assessment, uh, besides the MEAs. I'm going to hack it through the mental. But, um, from my understanding, it's, it's not required.
It's not required. However, part of, potentially part of the evaluation system is going to need some type of standardized method.
I'm just saying, I don't like it. I don't, I don't think it's a good testing benchmark for the kids at all, so I'm just throwing it out there.
The other thing, too, to remember with any type of testing, um, the parents can always opt out. Um, there are laws now in place if parents feel very strongly that they don't want their child tested, they just write to the superintendent, and they can opt out of testing.
This is an aside note, um, maybe for the strategic planning conversation, but I'm talking about, given the questions come up tonight about assessment, really looking at the local assessment system that we have here, K through eight, to really see what, what the needs are, making sure we're doing what we need, but not more than that. So that one, over testing kids. Yeah, uh, the longevity data, um, that we can get from the NWA's, um, is, is a strong factor of keeping the NWA's because we've been using it since twenty-ten, now even before that.
It's, it's not, it's no sense keeping it if you're not actually using it for its intent.
For what, for what intent?
And I would say, from what I've seen, that hasn't happened.
It's a very long test, and there's a lot of just clicking, 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 and they're not reading the questions when they answer, is what I find.
You'll see a difference when you see the online run this spring. You'll be able to see what kids are on, what question they're on, how fast they're doing it, you can slow. So.
Yeah, it's a difference.
Okay. Dues and fees? Do you want to revisit that one, or NUA? I don't, I, I think you need to have it.
Yeah, I think at this stage, I think we need, yeah. It's a bigger question.
Dues and fees? I, I made note about the strategic plan. Assessment, meeting means overtime, is it, are we overdoing?
Thanks.
Dues and fees? Programs in concerts?
Clarifying question on that one. Where they're, in the column where there's the percentage, it has like this mucky formula.
Division by, in other words.
Zero.
Yeah, we didn't budget this at all last year, so it has nothing to divide by.
Oh, okay. I didn't show what that meant, so.
This is nothing, you know, we have, this is new.
Okay.
Anytime you see a division by zero, it means it's a new line item.
Okay. And it's a three-hundred, and it's a three-hundred increase, so that's another.
Increase?
Yeah.
I would like to revisit that.
Okay, three-hundred increase? It's, it's just three-hundred dollars. Went from zero to three-hundred, Jeanette.
Oh, yeah.
It was not there last year. Field trips?
It was not there last year.
I would like to revisit this one.
Field trips?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a reason, something we got to research?
Um, I'm just wondering why it's a negative decrease.
Because we, there's, um, last year, David took his class to Boston, and this year it's not, because they go every other year.
Right, because I, it's a seventh and eighth grade field trip. And because of that, obviously, as, I feel as long as, as the class gets to go once in that two-year cycle, so it's an every other year field trip.
For revisiting, can we have a list?
Yeah. Oh, a list of what?
Field trips.
Okay.
The reason, the reason why I ask is I know in the past that the school has done a lot of fundraising on the, some of the parents have for the Canobie Lake field trip. And I know that a lot of the kids, when they get to eighth grade, they really look forward to that Canobie Lake field trip.
Actually, last year, we added, uh, the kids used to do their own fundraising and for that, but last year, we felt that that should be added into the budget. So last year was the first year, right, that we put the Canobie Lake trip in the budget? So it is in the budget now.
Okay, so it's not, the Canobie Lake trip won't go away then? That would make concern. I wanted it to stay.
But following years, it'll go back, it'll spike back up again.
Okay.
And go like this.
Okay, okay.
It's like an EKG.
Yep.
So does that need to be revisited now that we know what we're doing, or can we?
Um, no, because as long as I know that's going to stay in the budget.
We're going to revisit, only to provide a list of what they are.
Okay.
This is what he said. Teacher salaries, this is the Title I.
Now, this is all the K to two and a portion of Title I.
Be pretty good, Title I, two-sixty-one, isn't it? Are we okay? Ed tech salaries? K-two?
So clarify the four regular instruction ed techs, K through eight.
This would be the same thing that Chris, I mean, Kim spoke to on the other line above. Teachers' benefits. Name SUDA and these issues. Ed tech benefits.
We're revisiting that other one, right?
Yes.
So we should revisit this one?
No, actually, I don't think you did revisit. The ed techs, the only thing.
The substitutes.
No.
No.
We, we were revisiting about that extra fifteen minutes.
Can we revisit this one?
That was the salaries, that wasn't the benefits, was it?
She gave an explanation, and nobody said to revisit, so I.
Yeah, I'm thinking, actually, can I change my mind on that one? Revisit? Sorry.
Are we, okay, I'm kind of, which one are we revisiting?
This is benefits, we're on now. We're not on salaries now, Kevin.
Well, I'm on, I'm still on the substitutes for five teachers. The, the, I want to revisit the maxing out the budget for the potentiality of budgeting for everybody using every single day. That's what I'm wanting to revisit.
That's why you want to revisit.
Yeah, so for the teachers.
Yeah.
They just.
So it's the second one from the bottom on page two.
Yeah, sorry about that. I thought I had said that one.
Just, can you give a second look at it, make sure?
On the top of page four.
Yeah. Things been percolating.
Kevin Perks, huh?
That's it. They knew what they were doing.
Okay, we're down on line four. Professional group insurance. Ed tech group insurance, I assume. Substitute benefits. Meepers, meepers, two in a row. You guys okay with that one?
We're all right.
Travel, traveling conferences. It's about halfway down.
Yeah.
You see it's flat?
Yeah.
Supplies?
Revisit.
Yeah, but is this something you're looking for? So if we need to get it?
Uh, no, I don't need any. Nope.
You want a list or something?
Nope.
Okay. Testing. Please correct Benyard to benchmark. Books and periodicals. Take a moment and take, read that.
So now it's migrating down? I thought it was, I thought Math in Focus was K-five.
We only have one.
One set?
One set right now. Next year, we might be.
Two?
Called photocopy.
I can do that math.
Is it called Math in Focus?
It is. Not Ann.
Math in Focus.
Are we okay with that, folks? Just a minute, I want to make a comment here. Uh, equipment, seven-hundred, uh, equipment.
There it is.
K-two.
K-two equipment.
Yeah.
Computer software.
He's in good sports.
Yeah, which is we just talked about. Dues and fees?
Just curious what that includes.
NCTM comes automatically to my head, National Council of Teachers and Mathematics. Here's one of the.
So this is dues and fees for teachers?
Yes.
Not things like, I call it Excel, but IXL and.
No, no, that's for teachers.
Are we okay with that? Okay, and, uh, field trips, same thing, an R? Want to know what they are? Or, I'm going to just look over here and ask, can Patty answer that right now?
What? What the field trips are for K-two?
Field trips, K-two.
Went down.
One, what are they, and two, why'd it go down?
Um, well, really, it does the theater.
They, they do the theater.
Kindergarten, those, the horses, yeah.
I usually do, uh, science, um, field trip to the beach, which doesn't cost anything but advice.
Yeah. I think it'd just be nice to have a list of the, the field trips that could.
You still want, okay, you, okay, we'll put an R.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Article Two, special education.
Quite different from the previous line.
Yep. Secondary, excuse me.
Secondary.
Now, just for the warrant finance, you weren't here, well, you, you were here the first one, Mr. Neal was, but, um, last year, the budget carried over, they, they brought forward a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars, uh, from the undesigned, basically, which means at some point, you got to make that, you got to, you got to come up with a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars in a future budget. And so what we've done, when you see the overall bottom line, we've, we've put that hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars back in. There's avenues to take, but that's a big chunk of why that line, that line would be what it is. David, you look like you're wondering.
What's that?
You look like you might be wondering about.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not catching it, but I was going to wait.
Okay, last, no, this is important. I might as well just say it now, so we get on the same page, because last year, it's my understanding that at the end of this, end of the, when you got down to the bottom line, you said, well, we'll carry over one-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars from your, the undesigned or from the excess money that was left over at the end of the year to offset taxes this year, this, this budgetary year. The problem is, once you've done it once, you've got to come up with a hundred-and-thirty the following year if you're going to keep your overall budget at the same level.
What you got, what you got to do with the budget? Because this is extra money.
The following year, though, it's not there. The extra money's no longer there to grab to put in there.
That's why there's the increase.
So you got to have it, you got to come up with a hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars somehow to cover that budget gap the following year. That wasn't, in my opinion, I wouldn't have quite done it that way. I might have done like maybe half of that and something, and maybe spread it, but the, you'll see later on that, that's where the bulk of the overall increase is coming from is right there.
Clarifying question, Bob? So if I understand correctly, is this a correct summary that last year, it's showing the, the, the line item increase here of a hundred-and-sixty-five K, because last year, that increase wasn't there because it was coming from the undesigned funds, so it wouldn't have shown up there.
Right, it wouldn't have shown up there anyway, but that's.
It was there.
It was there.
But not in this line, and that's where this line looks artificially inflated because it was offset by the undesigned funds last year.
Would you like to add to that, Kim? It wasn't actually offset by the undesigned, it was offset by the excess that you had prior year.
So you're saying there's not that excess this year?
We don't think there will be.
No.
We don't know. We're not through it.
Not if our lawyer bills keep coming in.
We've got an estimate right now, but we don't know.
I have a side question.
And the thing is, if you continue to do that, there will be a year when you don't have that, and if you're trying to be tidy with your budget, which was what we're trying to do, you're going to have a problem at some point where you got to pay it or forego something else. Yes, sir.
I had a question that I want to ask you in the beginning. For those students who were at Sanford High School from twenty-ten to twenty-fourteen, did we get that gratis?
Well, yeah, we haven't paid for it.
Haven't paid for it. Are they going to still be able to build a hospital?
They're going to accept this contract that we just.
As, starting all over again, right?
It is, it is, it is at a higher rate, clearly.
We did have a contract, we did sign a contract with them in twenty-ten, and it was an amount of ten thousand dollars. And somehow or other, as there, we had changes in administration on our end, and they had changes in business managers on their end.
They became a city.
And, and so it just kind of like, it didn't get, we didn't get billed for it.
From a town to a city.
And the people on this end, because we'd never been billed for it before, weren't really looking for it either, so consequently, it just kind of like slipped through the cracks, and now we're, uh, now we're starting it up all over again, and they've pretty much let those three years go.
So for example, this year, we, we're going to pay fifteen thousand dollars. We didn't budget that in the budget, this year's budget, but we know we're going to have enough money to put it, to cover it this year, even though it wasn't budgeted. We were talking about excess a minute ago, so that's where some.
Things like that.
Money had to come up with, and that's where we did it. So we actually paid that bill on, we're going to pay it on February fifteenth, actually, now, so, for this year.
I would say, is the hundred-and-five students correct? Is that the exact amount, or are we adding an extra student, or?
I, I don't know off the top of my head. I'll find out.
No, that's, that's actual numbers. That's actual numbers.
And when we talk about the undesigned, we're going to have a budget to handle the.
Yes.
Fluctuation.
Yes.
Is this an R?
It doesn't need to be, it can be. I think there's much to do with it.
Would you want to know the exact numbers, though?
It is the exact.
Well, this is what, one-hundred-and-five is the exact.
The number that, that I'm not positive about is the eleven thousand. Last year, when I called Sanford and they told me the tuition rate was going to be ninety-nine-hundred, um, and in actuality, it's over ten thousand. So, um, I kind of look back the last three years, and it seemed like they added seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student per year. So this year.
We have a contract.
No, it has nothing to do with that. We're paying the state.
It's a state rate.
It's a state rate.
She was unaware of where to find that data, and I showed her, and then she calculated.
Yeah.
This is close.
What they, what they have, what they have agreed to with us, too, is that they won't bill us, in other words, when, once we budget for a certain amount for this year, they won't bill us, that, that increase actually comes to the schools sometime in December, November, December, what the actual state rate is, if I'm correct. And so they, Sanford has agreed that once we budget for a certain amount, that they'll keep us at the same rate for that whole school year.
Right. What they do is they go to the previous year.
The one year gone.
They won't go with the current year, they go with the previous.
Right.
So when, once that's completed, then I'll know when.
Right. Okay.
If anything, that's probably a few, maybe a few hundred up.
We don't have a choice on it?
No.
Again, I had one question on the fourth line again, on that three percent increase, and yet we have a decrease in the total amount, that because there's less people being cooked?
Um, I'm sorry.
We had ed techs that had left.
On page.
We, I'm sorry, we, we had some ed techs that got ripped.
Oh, okay. That's how you increase, but yet decrease.
Got your question?
Yes.
Okay. So if I, I think we're on the last one, secondary education private?
Do we know where they go?
They go to, uh, the new school, and they go to, um, Baxter Science Technology.
This is just high school students?
These are all high school.
This is something you need to understand, right now, as the way, the governor's trying to address this, but in his stated, you've probably heard it, we have, how many totals do we have in homeschool right now, I forget? 12?
12 to 15.
There's a chance that they could just say, hey, you know what, I wanna go to that school.
12 to 15 high schoolers?
Yep.
That are homeschool. Homeschool.
Homeschool, they can just decide to go somewhere, and we have to pay for it right in the middle of the year. And we just don't know when they're gonna do that, they're not gonna pull the trigger, so to speak. So, yes, you could look at this as, this is a potential, um, what do you call it? Slush, I don't know if it's not the word I'm gonna use, but this is a buffer, so that you don't get stuck in the middle of the year and have to maybe cut ed tech to cover the cost of the kid to go over, over there.
Do we have a reserve account for that?
That's, that's something we're talking about, so you could put an R in there if you wish, based on if, but see, if the voters don't approve that, then we're toast.
So are it?
Okay. Teacher salary, we're on page five, teacher salaries.
This is the explore program?
Pardon?
The explore program?
Gifted and...
Teachers' benefits, teacher insurance, I'm gonna just skip right down to, to supplies. Are we okay? Books and periodicals. Excuse me, technology-related supplies, that's a divide by zero, so it's a new item. Dues and fees. Programs.
What do we get as a result of the gifted and talented association membership?
I'll put a revisit, and get one, I'll get it from Belinda. Okay, programs. Okay? Transportation, oh, excuse me, we're not, that's Article Two.
That's it.
Right, I got a question, maybe.
Yeah?
How, so programs, how, what's the difference between this, like Shakespeare, and, and, and the Homestead theaters coming? And there was another one I saw, like visiting musicians, programs and concerts, why, those seem to be the same thing to me.
Programs and concerts from the other one was specific that the music teacher was looking to bring in outside music venues. So like a high school or a college band, they need to be reimbursed for travel, sometimes we feed them, if we're lucky.
You're okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so, my notes say Article Three would be next, which is right there.
I know, but now can we at least have a summary of how much Article Two went up? An amount or a percent?
It's not both.
Might be here, I don't know.
No, I think it is.
No, she's calculating it right there right now.
So the budget overall from FY14, '15 to the budget to FY15, '16 went up 151,504.
Say it again, please.
And obviously, the bulk of that is in the secondary.
Yes.
What percentage is that? What percentage? Well, we don't need it, I don't need that now.
It's gonna all change once we do the options anyhow.
Can we though, then have a, um, cover page with all the articles and what the ups and downs are?
You, you already do in the initial night overview.
Oh, okay.
Okay, are we on to Article Three?
We are.
Kevin, there were a couple tweaks that we got more information, so those numbers...
I'm just saying, as we go along and as we make a change, as there's change.
You'll always get the next one, you don't get it necessarily from there. Article Three. Trans, this one probably will go fairly quick. Transportation, Article Three, transportation, oh, I was thinking of something else, transportation. There's not much we...
Well, why, it increased a lot, by 12,500? What happened there?
Oh, if that's...
They're using the heat.
Or they put plows on.
For special ed students.
Right, is that the new contract?
Yes.
Let's do the new contract.
Oh, wow.
How long is the new contract? How long is the contract?
Two years, I think, or three years.
Well, no, 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 wait a minute, this is for, this is, this is for specific students.
The increase.
Yeah.
But it's through that contract, right?
No, well, I mean, we went with a particular contractor, yes, but...
It's for these couple kids we're talking about?
Right, where last year, we didn't have these students, we only had somebody else who went to a different place, so it's, it's relative to the students that it's pertaining to.
This is one of those areas that can blow your budget up unexpectedly, if somebody moves in mid-year and you have a need.
But can I just go back for a second? You're saying it's for specific students based on their needs, but there's a contract with a provider for the next two years? Is that, I just wanna make sure I understood what you said.
You need somebody to transfer kids that come.
Okay.
But it should be year to year.
Yeah, why is it a two-year contract?
It was done before I came.
Some years, we won't have people, hopefully.
Well, it's, it's a set rate per mile, so it's based on how many miles, and it's based a flat rate per hour, which was more than half of what the other two bidders were when we were bidding out special ed.
So this 57,500 is for two students? No.
No, 7,500 is for one student, that's what it looks like, right?
It says one dash 50,000.
No, it says one for 50,000 and one for 7,500, it's just two kids.
That's just for two kids transporting them.
Yeah, but it's, it's, what, I mean, you have to meet specific needs.
Are they going out of state?
Nope.
Because that's a lot of miles to get to 50 grand. I might have to think of a new job for myself, since I like to drive.
Can I just speak to?
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely, this is...
The transporter in years past had transported several students to the same school, um, and we were, it was roughly 44,000. We have, all of those students, uh, have either left the district or graduated, so these two students, one is local and one is farther away. And you really can't get into specifics, but, um, that's why there's an increase, and if we had those other students going to, um, Sweetser, it would be that much more. We just happen, it just happened to balance out, so it's really not too much more than it was, considering what we...
Sounds like a lot of money.
If you had two more kids, other than the cost of kids after that program, the cost of transportation would be... If you had two more kids going to that program, because it's one fee to transport whoever's in the unit.
Just have one student.
We just happen to only have one now, past year, I guess we had more than one.
So the one that goes, let's say the one is going, that goes, that's $7,500 a year, that's one student that goes relatively close.
Yes.
And the $50,000 one goes, obviously, a greater distance, do they both go on the bus at the same time? They can't go on the bus at the same time?
They can't go on the bus at the same time.
Okay, but they both take the same bus?
And one is...
At different times.
Has some severe needs there.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And the increase is just from the contract?
Well, the increase is because of the direction in which the driver has to go.
I don't understand that.
So, I would really like to revisit this.
So, the contract then is not for a set amount, the contract is for per mile?
So I could make 57,500 just driving twice a day somewhere, if I have the right credentials and the right vehicle.
The credentials, the vehicle, the insurance, and all that entails, which is kind of costly, so...
But I could do it for half.
In gas.
Contract goes out next two years from now, right? At the next year, middle of next year.
I'm just saying, I could do this.
But again, it coincides, too, these are things that can change at a moment's notice, and they can be quite expensive.
Let's put it this way, you gotta have a choice.
It can change at a moment's notice, and it, it isn't anything we can decide whether we're going to do it or not, we're going to do it, if these kids require transportation.
But if the district was able to get someone to do it for half the amount, and had the credentials to do it, we can't do that.
It's too late now, they've already signed the contract.
I think Kim added to your statement that the other provider has more money.
We did bid out. We did the contract out.
This was a competitive bid.
Yes, for special ed, and, and, um, this particular person was...
I didn't see the bid go out, can I get emailed on the next bid?
Sure.
And it was posted, like, was it in the newspapers?
No, it was not.
No, it wasn't put in the newspapers?
No.
Can, can I just...
Ken had it specific, specific bus transportation that could handle what was required in the contract.
I don't know, I have to figure this out.
Can I, can I just ask a clarifying question? When these bids go out, who reviews them when they come back in?
The superintendent.
Okay.
So Ken, this was before Bob, this was, um, an RP that was done by Ken for bus transportation this year.
And we've already talked about having a process and policy in place where it addresses all bids.
So are you...
Just hasn't been formulated, but we've talked about it because of this, and this was the reason.
So because, what you're saying, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying, is because we've signed a two-year contract with this person, we're stuck until we have to bid it out again? I just wanna make sure that, essentially, right? So we're kinda stuck?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I'm still unclear.
Now, if we don't have, let's just say that child, the 50,000 one moves away, we only pay the rate per mile plus the hourly rate for the, for the other person? So, I mean, it could happen, person could move tomorrow.
Still unclear why it went up.
It was just whatever the bid was.
Well, it's, it's, the direction that was done last year was not the same direction that is being done this year.
So, so clarifying, but did the location...
My concern is, I don't really wanna...
The, the direction, are you saying, what do you mean by direction?
The location.
Oh, the location?
Pick up and drop off.
Yeah, okay.
It's different.
The pickup and drop offs on where these students are going are totally different than what they were last year, so it's not like you're comparing apples to apples.
So that's, that's the difference.
The way you said it made it sound like we're taking a different route to get there, which, to the same place.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah, so that's why Mike is, so if I'm taking the scenic route...
During Christmas break, I, I did some Googling, tried to find a mini bus that met these requirements and so forth, you know, used one of the... And the numbers weren't gonna work out.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Tried that route, too.
That's why I was clarifying, it makes, it makes sense to me, I don't need to revisit this one.
We like to get kids to school as quickly as we can.
That's it. Well, what was it with the redistricting, way back when, that they were actually doing things as the crow flies and people expected to drive through lakes?
That's correct. Okay, so I take it this is not to be an R?
Well, did you say you wanted it to be an R?
No, I, I...
There's nothing we can control.
No, it's nothing we can control, except to...
Okay.
Isn't the bigger issue here, is that that potentially wasn't put out to bid properly?
Yeah.
I mean, I think that's a far bigger issue.
Right, I can't answer that, but I can say that, but I can say this, but I can say this, there will be a process well-defined on this. And not just this, any, any, any bid I do will do the same process. Because it should be all transparent, it's just the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ken.
Next item, teachers' salaries.
I, I just have a question about that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna address it, go ahead.
The increase is sizable, and I'm wondering why with just two teachers instead of three?
I'd have to defer to Ken.
Actually, I don't, I don't know how the math works on that.
I think it's...
I'm gonna put an R, so we can move on, go and put Y.
That's a, same question.
All right, is that okay?
Resource rooms, they're, they're in here twice, and it might have something to do with, they're in there twice, no, okay, R, who are it?
Ed tech salaries? And again, I'll put an R on the next one, because it's all that same discussion, okay? Teachers' benefits, ed tech benefits, teachers' insurance, basically the same combinations of what we just went through. We're gonna stop it.
Yeah, revisit the subs again?
The substitutes, the second from the bottom.
Uh, but also the resource room.
Substitutes, resource room.
Yeah, I had that already, because you, you already, you already mentioned that. I'm just gonna put it every time I see it, Kevin.
You're the best, thanks.
Neapers? It's the same as the other line on the other page, same on the next one, on page six.
Workup is big.
Travels in conferences. Supplies. Testing R and R.
Supplies for the SC section?
What's that? I'm right up on the top, you're already down.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm at the top.
All right.
We're on the fourth one down, uh, testing R and R.
Can I go back and ask why there's a decrease for, for both of those?
Okay?
Supplies and testing, yeah.
Joy, can you answer that?
Ken, yes, I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Second, and the third and fourth item, why the decrease, 24 and minus 30?
Supplies and testing.
We saved this question for you right after you took a cookie, we planned it that way.
Which one down here?
Put a R next to the supplies item.
Why is there a decrease? Oh, we moved some testing, um, requests in to another line, correct, Ken? We moved it into, we spread it out, so it wouldn't all be in one area. So there are testing supplies, some are needed for K-2, for lower grades, and some are needed for upper grades. They are specific to student, chronological age. And this year, we're, um, for example, we're purchasing a preschool test, we have to update our tests every so often, so the special ed testing has to be, um, per regulation within a year of the update, so we have to do this, so...
Do you need any revisits on any of those?
Supplies, I wanna revisit on all the supplies, any, any line item.
And what would you, what are you looking for, so that we can be prepared?
I don't need no, just a, just a discussion about philosophy.
Okay. Books and periodicals? Teacher's salary?
What is the SC mean?
Self-contained.
Oh.
Ed tech salaries? I guess, you might wanna talk about this one.
Yeah, this one is because we...
Where are we?
We're on ed tech salaries.
Sales, oh, yeah, yeah.
Self-contained.
Currently in this year, we have an ed tech that is being paid with the local entitlement grant, okay? When I did this budget, I moved her back into this one, so that's why there's an increase.
Where it should have been.
Who would expect to see decrease? Can we cross-reference to where we would see the decrease?
Grant. The local entitlement, local entitlement grant.
Which you wouldn't see in the budget.
That's right.
Yeah, it wouldn't show up on here, because we haven't had, it's been paid for by...
We're not getting that anymore?
Right.
No, we are, it shows up in revenue.
So exactly how many special ed, ed techs are there? Combined?
Seven, eight, eight, excuse me.
I'm confused now, so...
We had one in the local entitlement, so seven were in the budget, and now all of them are in the budget.
And again, why, the one that wasn't in the budget before, why, where was that money coming from?
I moved that person, okay, to understand, when you do a local allocation grant, you have to send in all the paperwork for every individual expense, and you have to justify it. When it comes to an employee, it's easier for me, okay, to do one employee than every ed tech and their 15 minutes on a daily basis. So, to be able to offset the 15 minutes, I, because when you total up the 15 minutes for each ed tech, it adds up basically to one full-time person ed tech. So, I moved one ed tech over, and then...
And you were, we were advised to do that by the fiscal, the financial...
By the...
Between audit with the local entitlement and a bill, it's like, there's one, don't, you know...
So I understand that it makes sense, I probably am cool with it, I need to explain it if I'm asked a question, and I still don't understand it, so... Let me see if I can explain it, to see if I do understand. So, we had a local, we had a local entitlement grant. Um, we had six people that we were covering in our budget, but there were seven, one was coming out of the local entitlement grant. This year, we're, we're budgeting for all seven.
Right, and we're budgeting for the 15 minutes, so everything is in the operating. Because the other thing, too, was, I'm not trying to interrupt, but I'm sorry, but, we...
Because there'll be, I will, I can almost guarantee I got a question about this, it's confusing.
Yes.
Because we're talking 15 minutes here, we're talking a different person moving from one place to another.
See, and, and last year, we weren't gonna do it, and then it got, after we've already done the budget, then they won't, it came back, and, um, so we use the local entitlement to do it.
Because it wasn't in the budget.
But it wasn't in the budget.
What wasn't in the budget?
The 15 minutes, covering the 15 minutes.
Can I, can I just give you a little bit of history on the 15 minutes?
Well...
Not yet, because my brain is about to explode with this one little bit. So, there was 15 minutes, we weren't... So, there was fifteen minutes we weren't budgeting for. We have to start budgeting for that. So, is that, my question is, we've added a person to the budget, and the fifteen minutes to the, to, 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 to the budget.
Yeah.
But we've also decreased one person from the local entitlement grant.
Correct.
Well, the minutes-
Where's that missing money?
Local entitlement, you don't even see any budget.
You don't.
It's not even here.
But that's paying for things.
Yes.
We've taken some, but it pays for certain things. What it was paying for, that one person, it now doesn't have to pay for.
Correct, can pay for something else.
What's that something else?
Your local entitlement shows up in one of the articles. So it does show up in the budget.
And that's my question, if we're moving, we're, we're, we're moving things around, so we're taking, we've added the fifteen minutes, we've added this seventh person, it's come out of local entitlement, is local entitlement going down?
Yes. Local entitlement has gone down every year, and my concern with the local entitlement coming up next year, and this is where the fifteen thousand with Sanford popped up, because you, to, to be able to keep the local entitlement grant, you have to pay a specific amount to secondary education on a high school level, okay? And you have to show that in the operating. Well, we, the previous year, we always had transportation for high school students that we had done, so that covered more than what we needed. Well, they're gone.
Intuition.
Right, and they're gone.
Those kids are gone, high school kids.
So, when I was speaking with the state, and they said, if you don't show anything showing that you're paying on a secondary level, besides, you know, the, the same portion we were paying for regular kids on a high school level, you'll lose the local entitlement grant, that's a hundred thousand dollars, which we were using for contracted services, so for psych and speech and OT and PT, and, you know, just to be able to cover all the other stuff that, you know, because those are very expensive items. So it's not all covered in the operating account. But, so, that's what triggered, what are we going to do with Sanford, and we, then everything came up, that's when we found out about the ten, the fifteen, whatever. So now that we're doing that, we know hopefully we will not lose it, however, that grant, and all our grants, have consistently decreased and have gotten smaller and smaller and smaller.
You don't want to, you don't want to do your staffing budget based on grants longer?
Right.
You want to get it to the operating, and use, use grants for, you need new materials, new testing supplies, use those for those things, as much as possible.
No, this one, and I'm glad I asked, because there's a lot going, there's a lot of variables at play here, from the fifteen minutes to the, to the additional person, to the actual, using the money as for within, and so we keep them, and also decreasing amounts for those grants.
Right.
So there's a lot that-
And the other part that goes with a grant when it comes to paying for employees is you also have to pay thirteen and a half percent on top of their wages, because they're grant employees next year, and that will go up.
So to summarize it, of all the people on staff, what, what do we talk in dollar amount that get anything from grants, from salary or wages?
Literacy?
Next year, I have-
So people know.
Yeah.
I have Title One, which is for our literacy, which is our twenty-three-hundred grant, which is basically, it's about, right now, it's eighty-six percent, doesn't even cover all of it.
Right.
And then with-
Everything else is in the operating budget.
Right, and everything else I put in the operating budget, because I'm, I'm trying, and I was trying to do that last year, was to keep all the payroll out of the grant, so that way, when you're, when you're doing your operating budget, you have everybody included. Because if you try to cover people through grants-
You're gonna burn yourself.
And then you pay more on top just because they're in a grant, I mean, that's not just-
When the grant funds run out, they-
When the grant funds run out, then you, that person is, that program is gone, yeah.
Especially in a small school.
Let me just ask you a quick question about the fifteen minutes, is that contractual?
I'm sorry, the what?
The fifteen minutes, is that contractual?
No.
Okay.
I take it, then you're okay with that? We don't need to revisit that?
No, I don't need to revisit, I just need it to understand, so, thank you.
But the next one you will want to revisit?
Which is, yes, I would.
Okay. And the next one, two, three, four, probably are okay, I'm guessing, based on prior lines, similar to it, actually, all the way down to traveling conferences?
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Are we okay with traveling conferences?
Yeah.
Supplies, is that a supply, revisit again?
Yep.
Testing. Books and periodicals. Director's salary. That's as it is right now. Director's benefits. Insurance, neepers, I'm on page seven. Director's tuition, any question on that? Kim, just address how tuition is generally done for everybody, too, because some people weren't here last time, and we touched a little bit.
Tuition for teachers are all within their contract, and then the same with staff, but when it comes to directors, it's what's in their individual contract, so, like superintendent or any of the directors, they might have a specific amount or line item they're allowed for tuition. Did you have a question, David? I saw your hand.
Yeah, I'll, I didn't want to bite, you ready? So, I just thought, I just thought of this with administrators, is, can they get salaries, or, well, can they get money on top of their salaries for meeting their SMART goals? Like, is there SMART goal incentive money on top of regular administrative salaries that they can get?
There is currently in the contracts that were negotiated prior to me coming here, however, they were linked to the, that you had to have a strategic plan. So the SMART goal had to be linked to tying to the strategic plan. Well, there's no strategic plan, so how can you tie a SMART goal to a lack of a strategic plan? So, I've asked Kim, I said, because that's not in there, when we started this budget process, and we hadn't met as a strategic plan, I said, you gotta put the placeholder in, as if they did have it, because I don't know where the committee's going to go on this, so this includes that, if you will say incentive, if they met their SMART goal. That doesn't mean that's what it's going to be, because right now, they have, two, we've had two, right? The first strategic plan, I mean, they agreed to not use the SMART goal format. So, I would say that each of these lines under the director support are inflated slightly, because it needed to have that.
How much did we pay for, for SMART goal?
Nothing.
We were bid in.
Why did this last budget?
Nothing, because it didn't exist, but it's in, it's in most of their contracts for the next, it varies, because their contracts are different lengths, some have two, some have three, so it's been put in there. So, but again, as a budgeting thing, I said, I don't know where it's going to go, you gotta put it in, just in case, and we'll go from there. Okay?
Thank you.
What line are you looking at for that question?
He was just referring to the director's salary.
Okay.
Yeah, well, yeah, we went through that, it made me think.
It'll be the same, it'll be the same for any of the, any of those people over there.
Just a-
Same concept.
Clarifying question just with that one too, is, I'm just wondering what the, like with this one, we've got the salary, in a summer salary, is that usually two line items, or is it normal for it to be put together?
Okay. Last year, we did this last year, when the summer salary was in the grant, and I was trying to move everything out of the grant, and I'd said, the summer salary for the director, which was so many days during the summer, if you pay it through the grant, you pay that thirteen and a half percent on top, so it's, it's not a good way to use the money, so make it part of the operating and move subcontractors or, you know, testing, or, you know, specific, the summer program, most of the summer program was done through the grant. In fact, most, a good portion of the local entitlement grant is to cover our summer program for special ed students.
I just wonder why I wouldn't go with the stipend committee? Like a summer, like, a lot of summer work programs-
It was there before me.
Okay. I just wonder if something like that should move to a stipend committee, things like that.
Because the special ed director doesn't have to do that.
Well, that's why the two line items are two separate things, so, and usually things like that are part of other things, which, that's the stipend committee, so, I just don't, I mean, it's just more of just a logistical thing.
Yeah, maybe next year.
Yeah, oh, all right.
Look at that.
I've got it as a note, but I'll make it a note as, kind of like a pause, I'm planning to necessarily budget revisit.
I kind of like the idea of keeping salary lines, salaries.
Okay. So, page seven, the first four items, are we okay with? Staff development, these were, I know they're the contracted service people, but I don't know what the reason it decreased on.
This is for William White, a person comes in.
Oh, yeah, I remember that. Basically, we changed it, it was four days, and we dropped to two days, okay? Last year was a four day, we felt we could do it with two days this year, coming here.
When you say staff development, what do they do?
They train teachers?
I mean, in terms of what, though? I mean-
There was, I understand it, you can speak to it if you, if you wish.
Sarah Teskey is an educational consultant, she's done a lot of work with our staff and actually observing students, preparing, and helping the staff prepare and understand behavioral intervention plans. So she's actually going to be here tomorrow. She comes in and she observes students, works with our teams, and as I said, she develops some pretty thorough behavior plans, and our students have benefited greatly from her services, so.
Just seems like that's more of a contracted service than staff development service.
But I think it's the way she has to, she has to code it.
What about William White?
Well, that's the name of the company she works on.
Oh, that's a company, okay, I always, that wasn't clear, so.
So she has been coming four days a week, and she's budgeting next year for two days a week.
That's correct. Are we okay with that?
Four, she's actually been, it-
In something, just on-
There's a reduction in the days, but she comes twice a month.
Just something in general in the contracts, remember, I mentioned a while back that we did a little quick, when I came on doing, kind of, we found some errors in the contracts, this was one of them, we redone them, but they all have an exit clause now that we can terminate X number of days, or they can terminate X number of days. Those didn't exist necessarily in all contracts, some basically were in effect till-
Perpetuity.
They are now no, no longer that, so, and they've all been re-executed in the last sixty days, okay? Or re-signed, not extended in terms, but just redone. Next one, new item? I think that's a prudent one, considering just-
No, no, it's not new.
Well, it's new in this area.
It's new in this particular, you know, we usually have it under administration.
Right, and it really should be here.
There should be some here, yeah.
And there's your tuition, there's not a lot we can do about that? Do you have any questions on that? Same thing with the next one?
Wait, 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 the public tuition, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, how many students?
Right there, read, read.
Where?
Just read the comment, those are the three.
More math than not.
Those are the three, it's not telling you who.
Yeah, you, you, to read private.
So it's three people?
That should be private.
That's correct.
That one should be private, the one that's one thirty-nine, that should be private, is that right, Kim?
Mm-hmm.
And then public is underneath it.
For the public, the comment should say tuition pub, private, not tuition public.
But that's three students.
That's correct. The next one, tuition public, now, it says five thousand dollar increase, well-
Because we budgeted, we thought it was going to be ten.
We were guessing ten originally, okay? This is really a completely new item, okay? And that's the one you just voted on tonight?
That's the one we just voted on tonight.
Yep.
Okay, so we budgeted for ten, but now it's fifteen.
Okay, well, it wasn't really in the budget, but she put a placeholder in as we started, and then we found out later that they were going to be fifteen. Next item, traveling conferences. Supplies, want an R on that?
Yep.
Dues and fees. Madzek, you might want to tell them what that is. It's kind of a funny name.
I know, Madzek, it's the main association for special ed directors, and they provide a lot of staff development, spring, fall, periodically legal updates, all day, day-long workshops, and the summer institute, which is three days in the summer.
I personally think it's a very good expense, I attended one two years ago just as a guest, and it was like, ooh.
They're very, very well organized.
Dues and fees.
What was that?
Oh, we're okay with that, okay. Main state billing, you guys understand what that is? Well, maybe the public doesn't, you want to explain so that people know?
Main state billing, they, when Medicare, when subcontractors bill for the work they do for Medicare students, they can actually go into the system and do it themselves, so it, and basically what happens is it goes in, it bills, and then we just receive a check from Medicare, and, but it, it keeps us out of, you know, the understanding and all that stuff. Basically, they just take eleven and a half percent of whatever was billed, and that's their portion. So that's actually quite, it, it seems like a lot, but it's not, clearly not a whole lot.
Not a lot.
They also make sure you're compliant.
And the words, now the dues and fees again, is this for our children here, or is this also for the high school kids in Sanford that belong to us?
This is for the directors.
It's just for the directors.
Just here.
Main state billing is a company called Main State Billing, also is New Hampshire State Billing, it's just a play on words, it has nothing to do with the state of Maine, smart marketing is what it is. Psychological services, contracted services.
I got no questions on any of them except the last one.
I just want you to know, that one there, I've been investigating alternatives.
Which one?
Contract, the psychological contracted services.
Psych services, okay.
I've been on it for two months. Speech contracted, speech supplies, I don't think you're, you don't need to revisit that supply, do you?
No.
Occupation, OT supplies, and physical therapy, page eight. Somebody will have to explain the summer transportation, and how that's going to take place. Transportation, summer schools to and from, da-da-da.
Extended school year that we-
We're on page eight, yep.
Right, the extended school year, we have several students, usually between twelve to fifteen students who participate in the summer program, and it lasts for four weeks, July, for July, somewhere in the beginning of July to beginning of August. We haven't picked the date yet this year, but the transportation, obviously, we need to get students back and forth, and that's what that is for. And additionally, Kim, I think you could-
And it went from five thousand to fifteen thousand?
We were, we're working for the kids to do the regular, we're also trying with the rural grant to have the regular kids have a program as well, like we did last summer. Last summer, we, we, we had funds from Title One, so we were able to work with the kids that were coming in on, on the regular side, and we had a little issue with transportation, and so we might have to stagger the kids, you know, like a certain group coming in at one point, and then a half hour later have the, you know, to get them all here, because it's about to come in with so many kids. So it's basically to cover the transportation for both sets of kids, you know, the regular and the special ed, I'm not sure.
We'll have to talk about that.
Yeah, and I think, I think it was because it was a lot more than what we budgeted. I just wanted to-
Well, it was more because of how it took place, and it probably missed the mark.
So last year's budget missed the mark?
So, that's what you just said.
Well, can I explain what happened last year? We, we, we were lucky enough to have the rural grant, and it was unexpected, so in order to transport all the kids, we hadn't staggered the routes, you know, the times, and we found that that wasn't really-
And we found that that wasn't really effective. We needed to, I think we talked about that at the end of summer.
Yeah, I'm going to put an R on this one anyway because that might not be as, as high as it needs to be, so.
I think also you were thinking of the other student and that's already included in the first transportation.
Oh, that's, that, yeah, but, yeah, but don't we have to transport that one in the summer?
Right, that is not included in the first part, right?
Okay.
All right, that's why, that's what that is.
So the fifty-one thousand one is not in this, you know, in any shape or form?
We'll, we're going to revisit that.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Fifty-one thousand.
But it might be a combination of.
Fifty-seven five.
And, and the summer school.
Yep.
Second line is co-curricular stipends?
Oh, yeah.
We're in a new article?
I just read the note, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And, and individual student transportation to educational facilities. So it is for the summer special ed transportation and the transportation we have for a particular student to go to a summer facility.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Can we get a breakdown of those two?
Yep.
Breakdown of.
What summer school costs and what transportation costs?
It looks like, it looks like last year's summer school cost thirty-six hundred and eighty dollars.
That's because we use the local entitlement money to support the transportation.
If you could do it.
And I'm wondering, is this under the same contract or is this a separate contract?
I can answer that.
Is this a separate contract from the special ed contract?
It's a rate per mile.
It's the same rate.
Same, it's the same rate.
Different.
Different direction.
Same contract? But is it the same contract as the fifty thousand dollar contract?
Same contract.
Same person, well, yeah, same.
It could still be the same person, two different contracts, a summer school contract.
It's one contract for mileage and hourly rate. And then you have to figure out.
But I heard before that there's a two-year thing.
There is, it's a two-year, from what I understand.
For school year and summer, summer services.
Whoever needs transportation outside of the Russes. Outside of our regular buses.
Okay, because I'm just challenging you, because if it's a separate contract, we can renegotiate or it may be worth looking at. It sounded like before we were stuck with the other one because there's a two-year contract. But if this is a different contract, that's what I'm asking.
I agree, it's the same.
It's basically a special ed transportation contract for two years and it would cover any transportation for special ed students, whether it's for, to go to another school, to go to a facility, or to go after school.
Well, I agree with that, but that's typically school year, not summer.
Oh, no, it's year-round. It's a year-round contract.
And she just added something, you may not.
So it's a two separate line items?
She said.
Yes.
Which is confusing. Okay, sorry.
She just added another thing. She said also after school, right now.
Yeah.
We have, I don't know, eight or nine on Monday and five or six on.
We have cash and tutorial.
Right.
And, and the tutorial are for special ed students that stay here after school. And then the number of students has increased for the number that are staying after school. And so for four days a week, and it's always, it's not always the same number of kids every night. And some nights it's only a couple of kids, some nights it's almost fourteen kids, so, you know.
Cash is for regular students also?
But some special ed students go to cash as well.
So the regular ed kids.
So the regular ed kids, yeah, do they ride the bus? Or they have to get picked up by parents?
Parents pick them up.
And the special ed kids get the bus?
Yes, the contract is, is specific, we specifically designed it for special ed, but there's no limit to the number of students. And the driver is very open to having any student that we decide needs to, you know, needs to attend cash or our program. So he doesn't separate that out. It's not on per student, it's on the, you know, the afternoon.
Yeah, so occasionally a regular student would take the bus if it.
If it, if they don't have a waiter.
Thank you.
We're revisiting that anyway, right?
Yeah.
What is cash?
Cooperative after-school help. It's an after-school home or help program.
And that's located where?
You're sitting right here.
Are they going to want a bottom line for that article at some point? You need it now?
Well, right now as it stands, or you can wait to the next meeting, it's fine.
It's going to change once I provide you.
Amount increase for a special ed.
Okay. When the next time they said, Kim.
I think we're getting close to eight-thirty, so let's just do Article Five. I was just going to ask that over fifteen minutes. Which is, that's the next one, right? Co-curricular?
Yeah.
Other instruction? What's the next one I've got here?
Yep.
Eighty-two, one fifty-five.
We can go in that order or you can go, you can, you got five, six and seven? Which one do you want?
Eighty-two thousand, one fifty-five.
I'm here if there's any, this quick article, as athletic director, does the name sports questions?
Which article is that?
Article Five. Let's do five.
Five it is. First one, co-curricular stipends. That doesn't reflect the change that you just had, Mary, at the last meeting, I don't believe it. Correct?
Right. Oh, no, yes, if you look at my note over to the right, as per stipend committee, need to increase line by three hundred and fifty-nine dollars for writing clubs.
Okay.
Yeah, but what happened to spring Legos?
And all of it, I'm just saying, it increased by three hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
So you increased that, that ten, eight, includes that already?
No.
Oh, okay.
That three fifty-nine has to be there.
Okay.
So it'll be up like eight percent.
The next item is stipend benefits.
And again, just add another twenty-eight dollars to it.
Traveling conferences? Lego? That's where they use net hour of coding too, I guess. Supplies? Want an R in there?
Yeah, and this will be, it'll be one conversation for all supply lines.
Well, it might be different for this though, where this, this would be sports supplies.
Well, this is, no, 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 this is co-curricular.
Oh, this is Legos.
This is like robots and, and supplies for Odyssey and all those.
I take it you're okay with the dues and fees for those, those particular items? Club transportation? Flat? Extra curricular stipends?
I got no questions on that.
Anything for Tracy? Stipend benefits, coaches contracted services? Didn't that, that change? I heard something about that. What's the deal there?
Yeah, because we're going to increase the minutes of basketball games to equal what the high schools play, so therefore the refs get paid more because of the extra one minute I want, so.
We okay, folks? Repairs and maintenance? Traveling conferences? I'm not hearing anything. Coaching supplies?
See, that's all for the kids, there shouldn't be any question.
Coaches dues? Sports transportation?
Okay, I'm sorry to nitpick on the transportation again, but why is there a decrease in this transportation line as opposed to the other?
The difference is, it's not so much that they're, the, we also were transporting for geometry, which we're not doing anymore. Because we have geometry here.
Good.
Okay, because we were transporting them to the high school and we're not doing that anymore.
So that's why there's the decrease in that line?
Well, the decrease in the sports line, Kim, was because I had over-budgeted last year. Remember, you and I talked about, that's why we decreased the sports transportation line? I over-budgeted.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, so we put it at what?
Yeah, three hundred and six hundred.
The games, where it's five away games that we go to and it's roughly anywhere from one eighty to two forty, depending on how far you travel. So Kim and I figured it out and.
Well, that's a bargain. Thank you, appreciate it.
I was just going to say this again.
Okay, that's in Article Five.
So you took out geometry where in the club transportation?
Yeah, you know, we took out the year before.
The year before, yeah.
That was the year before.
So just as a review, to let people know, the only, the articles that are left are six and seven. So.
And the next meeting is what?
So, so you're going to adjourn? Just to, I mean, just.
Do we have a, still have an executive session tonight?
Yeah, but, yeah, not, not long, unless you guys make it long.
What's your pleasure?[1729.82]